Doc's appearing by video. I guess there was some people claiming that can't be done. Just since Jody is here recording for St. Luke TV, I want to let everybody know that I spoke with Stuart Haines and I have in favor he can be here by video, audio, it's easy, you can hear him. And there's nothing against that or any sunshine violation. So that should clear the air on that. Jody, we'll get you caught up a little bit if you want. You want to have a briefing or?
Yeah, probably all right for the.
All right, so pretty much.
Can you turn the screen down a little bit?
There you go, Doc.
Thank you. Hi, Jody.
Hello.
So pretty much straight to report. Dylan Doster has a property, goddamn cemetery road. Was asking, you know, size of design permitting. So put it in a home. So that was approved and everything with his size of design and his home he's building. Right, a little bit, right next to 399 Road, so.
Yeah, that little B house.
They're gonna, no, he's putting a brand new one.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Where that little B house.
I guess that was a cabin or something, so. We went over the regular stuff. Unfinished business was the First State Community Bank. You were here when they did the presentation, correct?
Yeah.
The bank president, so we went over that. We took and we did a regular vote and then we did a roll call vote for a second reading on that, so that's approved and that's gonna save us quite a bit of money for them doing a lot of that stuff. We don't have to do an house and check, so. Now we're on adoption of a motion to allocate the CD funds as designated by the Board of Aldermen. Jesse, you wanted to reiterate on that?
So the funds we're talking about is the fire department CD that was cashed out without penalty. We need to make a decision on what we want to use those monies for. Just as a reminder, we still owe the auditor $11,000 and we still owe Heartland Engineering $5,000. It will not cover all of that, but it will cover a bulk of that. So that's, that's my recommendation for those monies, so that hits up to you.
How current is, are those two bills? In other words, do we have some time to pay them or is it immediately due?
Well, Heartland Engineering is always very kind about it. They always work with us. It's, as far as the auditor goes, it's been probably setting 60 days.
Yeah.
I see.
I think as far as, because those, I believe, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Jody, you might remember from 2009, wasn't there a public ballot issue of a tax increase on the fire tags proposal? Because that's what that was for in case a truck or somebody had major, you know, catastrophic event.
I don't.
I think it's under five, ordinance 560 or something. But, you know, as of August 1st, you know, I, I don't know if that was just allocated, that is tax money. That would through be, it's ordinance 506. But by the, the literature on it, it's, it's just very vague, because it says, section four, revenue deposit of the city collector. All revenue derived from the sale of any said permits shall be turned over to the city collector who shall deposit same into a fire fund as the city of St., of the city of St. Mary. This fund may and can be used to purchase and defray the cost of newer better equipment as needed. So my thing is, how's that? Because you don't, they're already going to be taxed with this new.
Yeah, I mean, the intent is stated that it's for purchase of fire equipment. Well, that's a non-issue now. So, but just to be clear, I think it would be wise to contact our city attorney and ask if we are on solid ground for using those funds to pay other bills since it's matured and the original plans has changed.
I did.
And then, go ahead.
I did email him about that.
You did get the response back on that one?
Yes.
I don't know what you said.
Let me.
And, and the.
One second, and I will tell you.
Well, uh.
You totally broke it.
You got it, right? Don't let her take it on in that room in there.
Okay, so Jeremy's response to my question regarding the fire department CD, his response was can cash out and move to general fund if approved by the board and if the fire department no longer exists.
You want to print that and keep that with you. Keep that with some.
That is the case, correct?
Yes.
As of August 1st.
All right, then, you know, in order to fulfill our duties and obligations, you know, paying our vendors, and those are really the only funds we have immediately available to do that, then I would propose to the other Aldermen that we allocate those funds for the payment of other bills that are outstanding.
And how much would that CD?
That being said, it would be nice. If, I don't know what the amount is off the top of my head, but if we use, let's say, I don't know, 60 to 70% to pay bills with and 30% to put in reserves, you know, because the, Harper just say it.
What's anything? His connection is terrible.
Hey, and I, I. If you create a curse, because I guess it's always a curse. I don't know how you feel about that, but.
Well, can you give your two cents back? We didn't hear you.
I do. Say it again, Doc.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you broke, broke bad, so we need your two cents.
Oh. Uh, speaks to both. Oh, I, maybe, I think we can have plan A and a plan B to the best of our ability. Plan B is take 70% of that money that's become available and use it for paying bills and take 30% of it and put it in savings in an emergency fund, which can still be used to pay bills. And that way we're, you know, doing what we can to save a little and being responsible for paying our bills at the same time.
You said we have that, we have that for the city.
Did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
There, that's what you said, nevermind.
So if we did plan B as Doc suggests, it would just, it would just about pay off the auditor and save a little bit and Heartland Engineering is going to work with us. So I've been more concerned about getting auditor paid for, but if we do plan B, 70% for bills and 30% for reserve would pay the auditor.
I think they did pay the auditor.
Pay the auditor and then we'd have a little bit just to put back.
I, I am in agreement with that. Now what about the, what's this fire MM account?
What?
Fire MM account, what's that?
Well, I mean, it's, that's part of our budget. And that is July, so they were still part of our budget. August, they, it isn't there no more. So I don't know what that looks like.
Okay, I see what you mean now. All right. Oh, we didn't get a full record file from Boe?
There should be two pages there. A full record file, what do you mean?
Oh, I thought maybe get an update number or estimated number for August, but.
No.
Okay. Okay, then, so, I mean, man, because we got two then, don't we?
What? What are you asking?
Those are, did we roll one of them over?
We, we rolled, yeah, yeah. We only cashed out one.
That's right.
Everything we, and we rolled over two more.
Wasn't that the one that had the higher yield in six months or eight months?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Okay, so it's, it's up to you guys. Just want to do that. Could there be a motion?
Well, I think the departments willing to work with us, the auditor definitely needs paid off. So, okay, so I make a motion that we do as Doc says and allocate the 70% of the $13,000 toward the auditor to pay bills, which will pay the auditor and put the rest in a savings fund to pay bills there.
And right now, with it really going away, until we get, you know, through this, but being that, seeing that, all that, he gets, so. We need every little bit we can, especially with that plan. That plan is just eating us alive. So, so is there a motion?
Kathy made a motion, we need a second.
Is that all right?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, second by Alderman Burman, all in favor? Doc?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, motion.
Aye.
All right. Motion adopted. Or motion approved, sorry. Doc, I'm coming off, saying. All right. New business, all right. Business necessary, but anything else? Bill number 1012, an ordinance asserting an amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation for the general revenue purposes during the year 2026 and fixing the annual rate of levy therefore. So pretty much it's a normal thing, there's no change. It's a dollar per hundred. So the high statute, we have to adopt this, so. I'd make a recommendation for the first, and then we'll do roll call second reading. The bill number 1012 by heading only. Is there a motion to table this?
Well, ordinance is spelled wrong.
You'll be fine.
Do we have, do we have an ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have, is there a motion? Motion by Doc, is there a second?
Yes, we'll segment.
Motion made, second by Alderman Burman, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right. All right, bill number 1012, by heading only, an ordinance asserting an amount of money necessary to be raised by taxation for general revenue purposes during the year 2026 and fixing the annual rate of levy therefore. Roll call, Alderman, do Doc. Is there a motion?
Aye.
All right. Kathy?
Aye.
All in the rows?
Aye.
All right. Well, motion is adopted. I forgot a second on that one. Was there a motion, a second on that?
The first reading there was Doc and Kathy.
Second or wasn't? All right, but do I have a first and second? All right, Kathy, we'll just do first and second. It's just a dollar per hundred. Anybody got a problem, file an answer.
We have a second, somebody can.
I'll second.
All right. All right, bill number 1013, an ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year ending on September 30th, 2025 and appropriating the funds for assuming there to.
That is not going to work out tonight.
All right, this will be, so is there a motion to table this?
I make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table bill number 1013.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, second, table it and bring, is there a motion? Are you guys want to bring it back up? You're not killing it, correct? Okay. So motion table, first and second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's tabled for bill number 1013. All right, bill number 1014, this is also repelling ordinance 985 in its entirety. An ordinance setting the basic rates in the city of St. Mary, Missouri for the wastewater service and the city wastewater system to be known as the wastewater rate schedule ordinance by heading only. Is there a motion to this?
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I have a question about it.
Sure.
Is this bill just dealing with the naming of the particular ordinance?
No, we need to raise the rates.
It's, it's the rates that we have to raise in order to have the surplus and then have the operating expenses and now with everything going up, you know. Now in the future, we could probably go back and adjust as, if, once we get all this other stuff straightened out with our engineer. But right now, we have to do, adopt this every year technically. But we haven't had an increase since 2022. I don't want it. I can, I, I mean, I think it sucks too, but it's just one of the things, especially the sewer. I mean, we, we got probably one of the oldest plants in Missouri and it's not in good shape at all. And it's, it's eating us up.
No, I know, we're.
We've replaced 38 grinders, the residents, and no cost to them and they cost us four grand, it was labor. So, I mean, add that up, you know. And everybody says, well, we didn't do that before. Well, yeah, you had a surplus of grinders after 93, they used parts for. After a while, you reduce them, parts up, you don't have them no more and it's obsolete. So really, I mean, that's what it is, can't do much about it. But now in the future, we can, if things change, like we're planning and like the grant we just got, then we can go back and adjust this and amend that and how we need to, when we hopefully can stand alone on the water. So, but right now, that's where we're at. And I hate to be like that, because I'm not one for burning like that taxation, but. So, I mean, do you have any questions on the rate increase on there? I mean.
No, I know, it's, it's an uncomfortable truth, you know, but we have to raise it given the expenses that we have.
I mean, like Kathy said, it's a necessary evil right now. I mean, we've held off since 2022. I mean, but then that was a 20%, and we're trying to make it as most cost efficient with being household income. Instead of just going numbers out there, we actually looked into what we can do where it's not going to kill everybody, but, I mean, it's.
Sure.
You know, so that's where we're at on that. And so it's up to you guys, if you want to make a motion.
Do we, is this where we determine what the rate increase is going to be?
We can, yes, determine. You have to put it on there though. You know, we had the public hearing. And I think we need to go where we just discussed on, you know.
So Adam and I, you can see the numbers. And so Adam was concerned about this large increase at 16.1%.
It looks big, but it's not really that bad. It's across.
It's $8.60 per month more for the average bill. You have to consider your cost per gallon after the first thousand gallons, how that's going to affect what your bill is going to be. But we're talking about this median household income. So where the number 16.1% comes from is the cost of living from 2023 to the expected 2026. That's where 16.1% comes from. Our median household income is at 7.8%. So what I did was subtract the 16.1 cola from the 7.8% median household income, which is 8.3% increase, which would make your average bill, if your average bill is $59.11, it would increase to four, it would increase to $63.12, which is a $4.01 difference for an average bill.
Is there a break down, we can give anybody?
Well, this is what I did then pencil the other day.
And the biggest thing here, I mean, I do, I really do. But we got privacy fees, you know, materials go up, ordination, I mean, it's just everything.
No, that, that's, those, all those issues, I mean, we know that no one likes to have their water bill increase or any bill increase for that matter. And, and the current political climate, just to cut funding to everybody except for the billionaires, I guess. And so this is, these are the cards we dealt. And, but from our responsibilities as Aldermen, this is, these are issues that we've dealt with recently, that we're familiar with, understand and feel compelled to increase the rates, you know, to keep our, that's a flow, to keep us afloat. But for the public's perspective, this may be the first time they're hearing of it in, you know, a public meeting that is being, you know, filmed right now. So we may be obligated to acknowledge this issue, let the public know what our solution is and give them a month to respond to it if they're going to. And, and then move forward with it, you know, in the next meeting or something. So unless, for some reason, we're compelled to do it today, is there a reason?
Well, we had a public hearing and that was posted on the website. It was posted in three public places. It was on the radio and five people showed up to that public hearing.
Okay, so our due diligence has been done with this then?
Yes. Which is required by statute.
You know, like Doc, he, like you said, that's just one of the things. No matter what you do, you're going to be hated because you gotta do cost of living and everything and try to make, make it livable. But, you know.
Yeah. Well, if that's the case, then, you know, then I would, I mean, then I would propose that we move forward on this.
Because, I mean, the last, what, 20 years, they've just been paying the minimum, gas rate and all, then all of a sudden raise it 20% just to pay the bond at the interest, you're only paying interest. We have to get above that and be in the black with a surplus. Try to get that, and if everything works out with that rule, that drinking water engineering grant, and it, it turns out to be what it is and we can go back on our own, we can revisit this. But for right now, the cost is absorbent. We've been eating some, we have paid for 5 million gallons more than we have charged. So tell me how that works, other than the pipe that comes from the county and the water tower, which I believe is a crop and craft, because it's not water main.
Well, technically, you know, the, I mean, we paid for it already, so we have it. So that 5 million gallons is a water asset that we have. So it's, that it's kind of good. However, you never, you always have it, you always have to maintain it. So it's there, it's a kind of a fixed expense that we've had and, you know, as it gets utilized, it gets replaced. So at this point, it should be like a net zero type of thing because it's, it's paid for already. Yeah. Yeah, so, I mean. So that, you know, over time, that is an argument for, we have a position for it. It may not hold up because it's, you know, it's bought, we have it. And as we use it, we gotta replace it, but we're not kind of replacing 5 million gallons at once. It's going to be 10,000 or 40,000 or 100,000 gallons. Yeah. All right, so if someone wants to make a motion on this, then I, to adopt it, then I'm suggesting do that.
Did you just make a motion?
Are you doing it, are you going to?
So I, I guess my question is, is what are we making a motion on? What's the number, what's the percentage that you're looking at?
Yes, look, look.
Yeah, so I think you gave us, there are two sets of numbers here. One was from what Jesse configured on the amount to increase, increase monthly, which would be, what, $4 or something, four or $6? And then Adam, did you say that there was going to be another, like, another way to look at this? Like it would be an $8 increase or?
If, if you wanted to get ahead of the game, to get, I mean, our bonding's getting paid. I mean, paid out of that per way money, because it wasn't getting paid for the last three years. So we're good on that, but we want to get ahead of that bonding and that way, if this drinking water engineering grant, once the engineering find the water, we got facilities up there, booster pump, they look at that and then this opens us up to more of a, not a liability, we're not in the red. We're paying more than our interest back to the bond. We're paying that back. And then also, if we can get in our own water source again, we can reevaluate this and everybody's going to hate us and hate me and hate me or whatever else. But the thing about it is, it's, it's just outrageous. I mean, I can't fight the district. I mean, I've tried to ask. I mean, I think getting charged for doing necessary DNR items is just ridiculous, for real.
No, that's, that's funny, but really. No, that's, that's fine, but really, we have two numbers here. One that you mentioned and the one that Jessica mentioned, is that correct?
Yes, the eight, the, yes, mine.
All right.
Yeah, so, so. 13.6 across the board, seems like a lot, but it's not. And then 16.1, that's the cost of living increase from 2002 to now. And then you take the median household income. So really, it'd be around 765 extra a month, that's a 16. It's not the 5% 20, you know what I'm saying? That's based on the usage. But.
Well, then, if there's going to be somewhat of a, like a little bit of a surplus created by this, then I think there's a, there's, you know, one is, you have a surplus and it stays that way for a rainy day. Uh, uh, and, you know, we, I think we're on the same page in trying to reduce our water bill, which is why we're doing all the engineering stuff, et cetera. But the other part of this is like, when you have money, in any organization, people tend to spend it. Because something comes up and they think it's a good idea to use it and you have it, so what, you know? So, and that's one of the things that CDs do, that they prevent people from spending money that you have because it's locked in for a year, or three years, or five years. So if we're going to be creating a surplus here, then I feel that here again, you know, we may, it may be wise, you know, to, uh, put it in a way where it can't be spent, uh, you know, unless absolutely necessary, so. Yeah, but so in a year going with the higher amount increase, is there a projected amount that we would create as a result of doing that? What, what would the actual surplus be? One would be break even and the other would be break even and have a little extra. And Andy isn't it?
She's, she's looking at it, uh.
Well, so you're looking at if you, at the 16.1%, if I do the math. That's, um, if, at the 16.1%, a minimum, that would be, this would be for the minimum bill charge, which is.
Right.
So that would be a minimum of 133,000, 081 and 40 cents.
Who is?
16.1%. And that, that is just the people that pay. That is 160 meters times 12 months times the minimum charge.
Yeah, and is that with the plan, the increase that you proposed, Jessica, or that Adam proposed?
That, this is the one that, that I proposed.
And that 100 something thousand, that would be, that's just what our, uh, our expenses would be, right?
Right, right.
Yeah. And with the, uh, here we go with Plan A and B. With Plan Adam, with the increase that he had on that, what's the amount that we're talking about there?
All right, so this would be 160 meters times 33.95 times 12. That is 65, like, and this number, 2917, times 160 meters times 12 months is 56. So Adam's proposal is going to be, I'm probably not making any plans here, 56, 56. Adam's proposal would be approximately 121,190 for the minimum bill.
That's cost, well, you said 100 something thousand and.
I said 133, he's at 121.
You said 133?
Yes.
It doesn't, does that make sense?
Well, well.
Like the higher.
Wait a minute, this is, oh gosh, get me all flustered up. All right, let me do this different. 69, and then, might be my math, you never can tell. 5986.
This is okay.
That's the number I, that it's, yeah, that's the number I come up with at 16.1%. It'd be 133,000 for 16.1%. Do I want to do Adams here?
It's not for the ads, but it's just unfair to say that.
It is unfair.
It's not mine, I didn't.
No, Adam's been helping me.
I don't own the race, I hate.
Yeah, yeah, so let's just make that perfectly clear.
Yeah, I don't want.
And this is an add, times 160, times 12. Yeah, Adams is at, the lower proposal, 8.3%, is 121,000. It doesn't.
And the other is 133,000, so it's $12,000 difference?
Yes.
And then that 12,000, uh, how, what are we doing with that? Is that just being placed in reserves or is it for, uh, increasing our, or to lowering our costs in some way or?
Well, ideally it would, um, because this, this 16.1% is water and sewer. So it's, it's both things. So hopefully it brings sewer, it helps us with the expenditures for the sewer and keep the upkeep of the sewer. And if our grants go through, that, that would just be reserved money that could be put back for a rainy day, you know?
Yeah, so for the public, so basically we'll have money left over to handle the many sewer problems that we have with the grinders failing, you know, et cetera. Grinder falls under sewer, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so just, you know, to present this to the public, we are spending inordinate, large amounts of money in maintaining and replacing our sewer grinders. And some of them are because the grinders are antiquated and some of them are also because they're being abused. And so our residents, some of them are abusing the system by dumping out all this stuff in the grinders, which then caused them to fail or burn out, which then we have to replace, et cetera. But they don't want to buy grinders themselves, uh, they expect the city to do it. So this is how the city's going to get reimbursed for that because the city's not making money out of, you know, space, you know, it's not like floating around in the air.
Well, I mean, to put it in perspective, if we put it in perspective, the sewer has spent 109,000 dollars, 109,742 dollars to date.
Yeah, so in that case, my, my zoom's going to run out here in a second. But in that case, I think it's a done deal to increase it because we got grinder expenses that are ongoing. You had 36 of them that were replaced, I think, if I remember what I asked, but.
Yeah, they're, well, we're at 38.
You lost and you're going to have to get it back. We'll see.
All right, made a motion, pause, your time to hand, motion, I'll be, I don't have to, I'll get back. So basically, it's 16 across the board. If we get that water engineering grant, we can reevaluate this a lot more. I mean, because right now, we're, we're letting a plant, right now, this is part of the plant, not counting the raid, we're at a hundred and 12,000 dollars for repairs. 112, and half this has already been replaced. But we had a torrential downpour, rain, a storm, bearish rate, I mean, it's crazy. If we had to pay, this plan, that's not even labor. And just, you think 4,000 apiece, um, you know? So that, that's, and it's not like, really, what is it, $8 more? So, I mean. Yeah, I'm paying.
Well, $8 more for the minimum, that's what I need people to understand. If you use, because the minimum, that's for the first thousand gallons. And after that, that, that cost increases 16.1% also per thousand gallon.
You know what I mean? But we'll be in the surplus and that's something we need to think about because for years it has been paying the interest on the bonds. We can't keep doing that, we're spinning our wheels. And then you got outside companies that you could be spending less money on, not like companies like Alliance or something. But when they look at your financials and you're all red and here and it looks like you just can't balance sheets, they're not going to take a risk on that because, I mean, Grant, he worked, like, he works probably a multi-billion dollar company, but still, it's the same principle. Why would they take a risk or, you know, over cheese something like that? Or even, you know, what we're doing is good. Why does it say this link is about 3,001, right? So I'll show you in your meeting. So, did you hear this, Linky?
All right, seven minutes.
Let me just see. I don't know what I'm making for it now. I don't have anything yet. I guess I have to buy it then.
Yeah. That's what happens when you.
Don't raise your raise. I don't like it as much as you guys, trust me. I hate it a lot, I was like, here's my bill, I forget to pay it.
Not really like the wrong English I was doing.
You know, I'm just like you, I don't want people, I forget. Hey, I'm like, hey, Jessica, that's me off.
I don't care, you cut anybody in the sweat.
No, she didn't cut me off, but.
I was.
I don't like that, I don't want to cut people off, I don't want nothing.
Six minutes, he said.
Six minutes or what?
So he can get back on, I guess.
All right, so I make a vote, or is there a motion to have a quick recess? All right, well, I don't have anybody at this point and it's dead.
So you're just going to have to.
Joey, what's my options here?
Make some polite conversation till we get back.
Do you want, Doc's that way, seven minutes before it's going to kick back on?
Give a short recess.
All right, due to the fact that we had, uh, technical difficulties, it was a single short recess until Doc went back. Is that all right, everybody? Do you want me to take this on and pull the room off for everybody? Anybody want any water? You want water?
There's cold water in that fridge. Everybody but Connor's dead.
Okay.
Connor drinks all my.
I did not stereotype you, so.
I am.
All right, um, is there a motion? All right, made second. Under the circumstances, we have two aldermen, so you said, hi, hi. So there's no disagreements on the first time, so there you go. Recession, just cut that off for you, men, guys. I'm praying you're out. You want me to leave it? Let's see.
You can hear.
Take it for that hour. I hate this, so. All right. Doc? All right, here's your money.
You're using?
Hey, Doc, all right, we're back. Can you hear me? Yay, okay, that's what I was hoping to hear. All right.
We're here, sorry, still only has a 40 minute slot, so.
All right, we're burning it up. All right, so where are we at? Reproach my memory.
Decide which percentage.
Well, you were talking about which percentage, Doc, so you guys will discuss that.
Yeah, so because of the grinder expenditures that are having frequent, that I, my feelings would be to go with a slightly larger increase to allow for that because we've spent an incredible amount of money on it already and it's no fault of our own.
Anybody have any rebuttal against that?
No, I know, I can see it, but if we're going to have to cure the cost of kitchen or grinders and everything.
Yeah, I mean.
You're either paying like, but per month or?
I keep negotiating them for where they were originally, but it's still not the greatest percentage. But, I mean, it's there and it was.
Hopefully this is just a short term until everything else gets repaired.
And I'm, and I'm not making promises on that, but this is part of my recovery efforts with the side inspections with Department of Homeland Security in England during that. As we were, kind of inspections, so since it's 100% complete install, those ones up there, we may, may, I'm not, there's no guarantees to get reimbursed for that. I'm hoping if we do, great. Even if we got 50%, great, 20%, I'd be happy. So, I mean, that's, that's where we're at, so. You guys got a vote on it? We're just going to move on to the line.
I'll make a motion that, uh, we will accept the 16.1% increase in the water and sewer.
Is that, that's all across the board, correct?
You're going to have to do it twice. There has to be two separate bills.
Oh, for.
One for water, one for sewer.
So break up the percentage, are you?
No, it's the same percentage, you just need to vote on the difference. Once for water, once for sewer.
Then I make, put the person for water then, okay?
All right. Motion.
A second motion.
Motion made, second alderman, Duda, in favor? Any opposed? All right, uh, I'm on second reading on this by roll call. So again, aldermen sided and all good recommendations, uh, Meserel Water Association also to try to get out of this hump we've been in for 28 decades. 16.1% increase on water, is that correct? But that's, Jessica, break that down for everybody, we just got to say that. So is there a, I'm going to call a roll call vote. Alderman's in, Duda?
Aye.
Alderman, Kathy Burman?
Aye.
Alderman, Rose Rosenway?
Aye.
All right, that amount has been adopted.
Still don't have copies of bills out here.
Which bill did you want?
That, that's, minutes, those are minutes.
These, is he talking about these?
You have to have a copy.
Give him the bills because, Joey, you can raise your hand, don't interrupt when I'm in the middle of my.
I don't know what you're asking for.
The statute. Get it? The statute, say all this book, give him everything in this package.
I will make him a copy of the whole package.
But I will not be interrupted again in the middle of the vote. Am I clear?
Yep.
Yes or no?
Yeah.
You don't do, you know that.
Not one time.
Let the record show that we are providing every bill ordinance that was passed before, and Wednesday, June TV got here for bill number ten twelve, bill number ten thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, by reading ahead and only. Those will be provided at anybody at no charge. Would you guys like one? Would you like one? Would you like one? Sure.
I already know.
I know. You don't need one?
No, I don't need one, I don't need one.
And then also, I'll be posting this online, and I'll be posting it everywhere, so...
Yeah.
More tax pay, money you weigh down. Is it the full package, with everything?
I think so.
Okay, is that what you needed, Jody? The financials, and I think...
I just needed, I just needed the, the bill, because that's what the statutes state.
You...
A copy of the bill.
About the financials, like, on there, you said finance, it's got a financial tab. Is that on there too?
I think so, I think I saw it on here.
Is that in that whole package there?
What is what in the package?
The financials.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Everything's in the whole, what you're looking at, he's looking at.
I just make sure, well, he has the website, I would make, because, you know, we haven't had financials.
Well, I haven't for years.
Is that how do it no more?
I haven't gotten any.
Oh, okay. Well, that, is that what you needed, though?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, cool. Alright, moving on. Um, so, we had a motion, we had roll calls, so that was adopted, so we have... Desperate water, correct? Can you get back on track, please?
Yes.
Alright, so, alright. Same thing, um, you know, for the sewer?
I mean, the motion, Jody, go ahead.
You need to read it.
Go ahead, that's fine.
Alright. So, is there, where's the actual water phase, let me find it on my page here. Okay. Uh, bill number ten fifteen, repealing ninety-six entirely, it doesn't say entirely, but it will be in number four eight. All ordinance set basic rates from the city of St. Mary, Missouri, for service from the city waterworks system. This being known as the water rates schedule ordinance. I can go into it, um, I can read it heading only, so, it's up to you guys, I've read this by heading only. You guys have any questions, feel free. Anybody have questions? I'm all about, you can speak your minds, go ahead. Alright, do we have any sponsorship on bill number ten fifteen? Ordinance seven, basic water rates.
Sewer.
Sewer, I'm sorry. Excuse me, that's getting corrected, wastewater service.
And make a motion that we accept the sixteen point one percent increase on the sewer.
Okay, and that will be bill number ten fourteen. We need to correct that.
Yeah, we did, we did wastewater first, ten fifteen is water.
Alright, make sure that's amended. So, we had a motion, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Motion made, seconded by Alderman Rosenwig, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, second reading for adoption, this is gonna be for, do you have a motion for adoption of a bill? Ten fourteen. Have that motion, second that doc.
To adopt.
So we have one motion. Do, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded by Alderman Rosenwig. Want to do a roll call vote, Alderman's in, Duda?
Aye.
Alderman, Kathy Bergman?
Aye.
Alderman, Rose Rosenwig?
Aye.
Alright. So, there's no names, so, bill number ten fourteen is now adopted, and also, bill number ten fifteen, repealing ninety-six is adopted as well. I want to correct that, because we did water before sewer, that was my, that was my mistake. That's my mistake, so, it's corrected. Alright. Next. Uh, resolution to apply for grant funds from, for the wastewater treatment facility project with Delta Regional Authority. We have to do a resolution by everybody's agreement, and be able to submit this by Monday. So, there's up to, you get a certain amount, up to half a million. Depends, it's a very competitive process, so, like I said, it doesn't hurt to try, but we were selected as one of them that needed to apply, Michael, our engineers on the other part, um, Sarah, or Tara come up here today from CMO RPC, and helped Jazz, they went through, she already knocked it out, felt the needed, in and out, so, all we're gonna do is just submit it, and see what happens, and I think there's approximately, did she say how many millions of dollars about this year?
She didn't say.
There's several million, but, the max, I mean, it's, you know, there's no match or anything, so...
Yeah.
This may be...
I make a motion to...
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I make a motion to adopt the resolution to apply for grant funds for wastewater projects with Delta Regional Authority.
Alright. Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'm not even gonna do second. Alright, pass. Okay, let's get through this, this is... What's next, Jess?
Department of Labor.
Alright. Give me a second. Is it mine first?
Mayor Adam Beck, emergency management.
I got it. So, uh, emergency management have been working with FEMA, and doing their side inspections under the Missouri Declaration of Disaster. Number forty-seven, two D R, uh, since that storm during March and April, uh, from the wastewater treatment plant to the park, to the rail town. So, I've been really busy with them, um, submitting different things, uh, I also went and, uh, me and Jess applied, and got thirty-seven thousand five hundred in funding, at a hundred percent total cost for the drinking water engineering. So far, like I said, it's a hundred and twelve thousand seven sixty, just to fix the top part of the plant, but, so right now, with the D R A, there's more than twelve million dollars, so, that was available with CMO RPC. Me and Jess work out of hand and hand, and Michael, like I said, the minimum's fifty thousand. The max is five hundred thousand, so, that's done. Uh, I'm working on some mitigation issues with flooding, with them, uh, they'll be down here Monday, and, uh, I'll have a guy with a scope, hopefully, that goes around the culvert, see wherever high I N I is, and then also, see if any culverts are collapsed, that, especially down Third Street, and along here, um, and other damaged areas, and then also, the next phase will be to, the, the next day will be streets, and the next day after that will be, uh, the park, where the building fell down and everything, then, so it'll be kinda in and out, do a little bit of everything, side inspection, once that's done, I gotta go in there, go on Excel, and I, uh, Jess is gonna be my point of contact, because our previous expenditures could be added to that and uploaded, so, for reimbursement, and even it costs down for contractor hours, fuel, labor, like Frank's labor, any of our labor, time is money, that counts towards that, so, that's something to look at. Uh, other than that, I have nothing else, uh, just same old stuff, you know? Alright.
Read.
Alright, so... I guess I'm missing my page.
I don't know what you did, the police department's next.
We don't have a police department.
Well, I do have something to say, I received, um, an email today from our former chief of police, Tyler Urban. I don't know if you recall, but our last meeting, there was, um, a resident that had issue with, um, Tyler not filing a case for her, um, and...
The official complaint?
Yes, the official resident complaint. So, um, Tyler sent me this email today that states that case, um, St. Mary Police Department, case twenty-five dash zero 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 one, has, by the prosecuting attorney's office, been determined to be a civil matter.
Is that straight from the prosecutor?
No.
Because they can provide a lawyer request at that turn, at, uh...
This is from Tyler himself, that shows a, it shows a text message from Tyler, and a text, well, no, I'm sorry, this is an email Tyler sent to the prosecuting attorney's office, and her, the prosecuting attorney office response.
Okay. Um, but also, she can go up, if she disagrees with that, and request a Freedom of Information Act from, anybody up there? And see if it was filed, because, um, kinda questionable, I've heard other things, but I'm not gonna go into that. But there was a statement filed and turned in, well, it wasn't turned in, because, but I understand, he's no longer here, so, he has really no say so in any legal obligations in cases, unless it went to court, so, um, it's just best he can try to stick to where he's at, and stop, I mean, he can file review, but it's a citizen's job, they go get, they're on record. I mean, they can tell him here, but we have no way of doing it, because, um, I don't think he left any copies of the reports or where it's standing, I don't know. I can't remember, but, um, can I see that, please? I'll be able to, but, sorry, I'm keeping up the time. This was sent February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. So this was received, and, and he was just now getting back to the...
That's the email that I received today.
I know, I'm looking at the dates, this is February sixth, and that is, hopefully, of the court. And, it's a day later, so, months later, we notified a victim after they requested multiple times where it stands. That's kinda funny to me. Because, the day of that filing, what was she filed that day? The other is... So, you gotta look at the dates. And also, anybody that suspiciously coming in by City Hall, or caught on City Hall property, drunk, and walking around, will be charged. Because that is the law. Anyways, but yeah, there's, if you were to time stand, that makes some sense, because why would she just file that last week, or a couple weeks, was it last week?
I, I didn't.
Last month? The last month wasn't? That makes no sense. But, I'm not here to talk about personnel policy, or anything like that. They just gotta take it up with the court.
Okay.
If they have anything. Um, same thing, if anybody calls, like, I guess we had an issue with somebody calling you today, but they didn't want to disclose anything. So, just refer them to DDCC or somebody else, if it's referring to him.
I don't know who it was referring to, I haven't given no information.
Well, if he asks for him, I'm just saying. And they can call the High Patrol, they're over, right? So, I'm just, you know? Or you can call county, but, let's see. What was that? We got a leak?
No, it's like that, to get drinkable water, and put this on duty.
Alright. So, also, uh, I noticed, since we're getting to this real quick, your house at, your rental, one rental, of it, what we're talking about, it's got derelict licensed vehicles, and those plates are from Illinois. I don't know if you noticed that, it's got a junkyard going on, so, this, this after thirty days, you're supposed to register within the state of Missouri, and with the city. So, I'm just letting, I don't, I don't know where the truck come from, you?
I can see, I'm...
Oh, they got photography.
Well, check that one out, too.
Alright, moving on, just that.
Street.
Street Department, Eric, you got it there, and Frankie?
Uh, you know, what's happening is, um, we, uh, did some coal patching, did some holes down, like the Hinder Fort and Walnut. We're trying to see without a gear, hopefully next year, maybe not this year, but next year, to see whenever, uh, the contractor's over on the island, does the chip and seal, maybe we can catch him next year, and then chip and seal across that route again, because the chip and seal's starting to come off, and that's anymore, starting to get a lot of potholes into it. Uh, a lot of heavy traffic goes down that, you know, especially food trucks and stuff goes in Mary Cliff, and then farmers going back in, same railroad area and stuff, so, hopefully, we can, we can, and the other thing is, uh, I mean, Third Street here, like Adam was talking about, hopefully FEMA, you know, uh, we know we got a lot of water underneath that road, and I know we've been talking about cleaning the dices out, putting the culverts in, but, if FEMA can work this out, or whatever, to, uh, get the funds for it, and we can still get the culverts and stuff in, and just help us out, so...
Yeah.
But, really, I wanna have on that, I mean, one other thing is, if somebody knows of any big potholes or anything, let them know, we'll take coal pads and put it in, and so, I mean, it's all we can really do, so, you know?
Yeah, we have some, you know, left, but, hopefully, it holds up.
There's some blind corners, too, over by Joey's house, and up from Miss Klein's house, uh, um, Turbin Sycamore, uh, wait, yeah, Turbin Syc... Turbin Sycamore, where we replaced those water lines, and over by the water tower, there's a dense brush when you run the herd, curve, so if someone goes out there to read meters or something, they may run around and run into kids, or whatever, so, the, the trees and brushes need to be trimmed back in a few spots around town.
Uh, Doc, we've been slowly hitting that when we can, and if we're breaking, so, that's on our list, like, Sharron's been helping us, you know, part-time and that, and she's...
Arnold, she's great.
So, but she's helped out tremendously, plus the guy's been weeding, I mean, we, there were some complaints about down the road here by a resident, that last meeting, and we took care of that, we've been trying to address all the other issues. I gotta cut some trees down that fell in the graveyard, but it's not so big deal. Um, but other than that, uh, like Jody, that's on the list, by Ronnie Barnett, to clean all that out. We're gonna get there, it's just between every, trying to balance time between everything, it's kinda been a mess, with the grinders and everything. But it seems like they, like the fell, and it's really hot, and a hundred ninety degrees. Cause it seems like they, like the fail when it's really hot and a hundred ninety degree now. Do you have anything else? I mean, with how many days?
The only other thing we need to do is, um, clearing the sides of the roads for dry sardine now, since it's starting to cool down now. We're gonna do it, you know, there's a hundred and seven plus outside, so.
The Cypress Street project down sixty one's looking pretty good.
Excellent.
So I just wanna let you know on that one.
Thank you.
So, um, anything else you think really, I mean, do we, we don't have any hole holes or something? Well, what do you think that snuck in on Cedar is, is cut out?
Yeah, it could be cut in the road of spring water underneath the roadway.
That's what I told FEMA.
That's, I mean, our water main's there and that's, you know, gravel, so.
Yeah.
That's a lot of mucky mud there. I haven't, I mean, my touch of water coming up through there is not, got no.
I didn't wanna make sure, cause.
I mean, that's just like down there, that hydrant, when we, everybody keeps on calling that it's leaking, it's not, it's just spring coming across the road there, so.
Okay. Alright, so. Alright, next here.
Water and water.
I don't have it on my page.
I don't know what you, I, everybody's pages were in the exact same order.
Alright.
And it should've been the second page of this.
I have it right here, it's on the back. I don't have it anywhere. Alright, that worked, alright. We did that wet water and wastewater, uh, Frankie and, uh, Eric, you done anything to report on that?
Uh, you know what they asked the quarrel on, syrup line's been doing pretty awesome, I mean, with what we're working with. Um, Adam did get some bio safe, uh, 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 enzymes, um, they're a little bit, they're, uh, like super bugs, um. We was trying to get the plant back in operation, which plant actually started bouncing back out. Um, our levels in the sludge, uh, the T S S, total spin solids has been down tremendously. I, I guess it's eaten a lot, um, the sludge blanket, we're not having a big sludge blanket no more right now, so that's kinda plus. Uh, I do know the roters, uh, you know, have been working pretty well. I know we got one that's kinda been getting heated up on us with bearing, uh, which that one's been giving us an issue anyways, uh, for a little while of trauma. But hopefully everything goes together. Uh, the other thing is lip station pump, uh, we installed that, the, it got pulled back out. Uh, the manufacturer trimmed it down to make it a three horse, cause it was a five horse and we had three horse system in there. Um, the shaft and the trim down was not right, so it, uh, basically locked it up, uh, when we tried to engage it. And it wasn't on our part, it's on their part, uh, Adam took care of that, we're eating a new one coming in to, so we can replace it. Um, we did replace, what, three grinder, four grinder? Four grinder we replaced, uh, this past month. Um, the other thing is, is a couple of them we was having headaches with trying to figure out if it was floats or if it was wiring or what it was. One of them went down, we finally just went ahead and put the, uh, pump in. Uh, eight oh four Mulberry, it decided it wanted to give us, uh, the bearing decided to go out and crack that one, so we had to put one in there. Um, five ninety four, um, the pumps running, we started having more life coming on. Uh, Adam did order some other float for us that's a little cheaper than what we was paying for, but they don't have weights on them, so we had to put some avocado weights on them. So it's actually pumping on a boat here. The floats were raising up because of the solids and it wasn't flipping over, so we had to get some weights on them and it's been working properly. Um, uh, wastewater side, that's all I have on right now. Um, I know the sludge tanks are not cool, but we, um, I know we were talking about hopefully every year we can, uh, but right now with the sludge dumping. We're not dumping a whole lot of sludge right now because of the enzymes, so that's plus. Um, so we're not having to, you know, dump every, and we've been keeping an eye on the V O and everything. Um, the other thing is on the water side, we had to replace our Kenty pump again. Uh, we replaced it back in February, um, it decided to, the diaphragm, I guess busted or something inside of it. It was not pumping thoroughly like a boat do. Uh, the corals started dropping out on us, which we're not down below level or anything, uh, crazy or anything, um, we've been keeping an eye on it. Uh, we sent that back off to Sidner, uh, they're gonna try to warranty it. We did get a new pump in because we didn't have a backup pump, uh, it was five hundred and some dollars. Uh, they did throw in some injectors, uh, extra parts, uh, and stuff. Um, we do have that in operation now, so it's actually running and doing what it's supposed to do, which I gotta sit there and kinda adjust, uh, for what we need. To get from that tower to that tower out there, uh, cause we don't have, uh, the dosage where I can actually figure the flow out of what's coming through the line, cause we don't have a flow meter. Uh, so I'm kinda adjusting as we go and we're sitting, I mean, I took the, I mentioned the tank, how much water's in and all that, but. He said I could have your flows coming in, so we're kinda happy to try and get that adjusted, but we're adjusting that up. Um, the other thing is, is bleach. I know me and Adam and Eric's been talking a lot about bleach, it's hard to get gallons of bleach. Uh, we've talked about, uh, maybe going Brentag and getting five percent bleach from them through barrels, which we do have a tractor that can handle it. And pick it up and set it in for, um, uh, assuming everything that we've been looking at. Um, water's been pretty awesome, uh, back to eat, they come back, getting everything, uh. I know I've been in communication with Ian on myself too, on a few technicalities down there that's been going on. Trying to see if, uh, hopefully turn things around a little bit, uh, cost efficiency wise. Um, but, uh, you know, Adam's been working on, uh, with Mike and I've been working with Mike too. So we're gonna hopefully with this, uh, soon, bleach fall off and it's cooler here, uh, we're gonna have clay come back down. We're gonna GPS all the meters in, so they're on diamond maps, so I will, whenever the guys are reading meters, they have it right in front of them. Uh, so that way I'm, uh, they can stand out on top of, so whenever you're walking, so. But that's all I have.
We do have a question. You were talking about the pump, the Kenty pump, you said that we had limited over five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Did we have to go and purchase that?
Do what?
Did we purchase that?
Yes.
Okay, so then what is the deal with the other one we sent back?
So we're waiting.
Not being warranty.
So, well, it's still covered under warranty, uh, the months of warranty are whatever year, whatever was it, a year?
We haven't even, they had that on, that's all I've found.
Well, no, we only had it for a few months, but I think it's a year.
Yeah, it's a year on that, this one's two years off.
This one is, yeah, so they're taking that one back, uh, because they dropped it off there, so they're taking that one back to take it apart to see what was going on. If it is, uh, covered under warranty, we will, uh, get a new pump out of it or we'll get a, uh, credit where we can get another pump or whatever from the company.
From the difference.
Yeah, yeah, from the difference.
So that one was nine hundred and seven dollars, this one's five hundred and five.
Seven minutes.
Five hundred and six, so, and all in general, so it's either, you know, I talked to them, they'll make good on it. Whatever difference is, we get back or we can use it for parts if we need, then, but they gave us injectors that'll save us money right there, so. Alright, um, park, cemetery, looks great, um. Sharon's been up there all week, cutting trees and brush back, hauling it out, weeding.
At the cemetery?
Yeah, you should go look at it, it doesn't look the same, like the next time you know you probably won't have to weed eat because she went around every headstone from the front. And she's starting to work up on top there around the fence that got started. So it's just getting there, so she's been cleaning some of them off too and just kinda going through. And there's a big limit they called out, we're gonna cut that up with chainsaws, cause I didn't know she didn't have one, so. Other than that, the park is what it is. I may see, uh, Merlin or somebody wants to bail the ball field, which is all, you know, or if not, I'm gonna cut it. So, I mean, it's sometimes it's nicer just to get like we did last year, you know? But, um, and then we'll start cleaning up down there, which I'll take a pic, we got pictures before and after, so that's all we got.
Now, we're talking about last time, we talked about, um, there's some trees, there's two trees that were currently leaning up the cemetery. Are those the ones that she's cutting or those?
That's one, no, the, the one she's cutting is just the cedar trees.
Okay.
She's going around pruning them, where you don't get hit, and you can walk underneath them. Those, I'm gonna have to either find, find or have somebody at a bucket truck reach out or something to get that one big one, cause it's a monster. Yeah, so, I mean, it's gonna have to be bucked and it's greased out, so, but, um. Uh, that one's been taken care of, the other tree, there is a tree in Park that is docked, he's taken care of that, so. Uh, that one's, you know, will be gone, which I need to find out a way to block the insurance. Because there's been people doing some things down there they shouldn't have. So I don't know how much those Lego blocks cost or whatever, you can lift them up with a tractor, just to block them for time being, we can move them. I think it was sixty bucks or something like that. For the, for the blends? Okay, so I don't know what they are, need to find them or may find them online to kinda keep that. And then over here is truck parking, is the, me and Doc pay trees, but these semi drivers think it's funny driving through the grass instead of turning and going on the road. They're just cutting through the grass and renting it up, so I think we should place something there. So it's up to you guys, what you think? So. It's just hard to move because I already ruined one spindle and that spindle's four hundred dollars on a lawnmower, so. And, uh, have you had a response out of the railroad?
No.
Okay, so, alright, we're doing good.
I just tried.
You did try? I'll call, um, anything else, guys? Um, sense of participation?
There's one more thing, man, there's a water pipe. Um, we did add a water leak, um, up on sixty one, uh, rug side, he drew, it was a service line. Uh, we do wanna thank Perrill again for bringing their back here down, sucking it down for us. We had six fiber optics in our way, uh, if we would've put a machine in there, we'd have ripped everyone out, so.
Yeah.
Um, it was, uh, I'm, I'm glad they actually had them down the horn and.
Yeah, they.
Had it down, the next morning we back hereed it out and, uh, we got it fixed, uh, basically a copper pit. Copper looks good on both sides of what I cut out, um, put a piece of X in. Um, the only thing is, is if we do have to replace that whole line, we're gonna have to go underneath Highway sixty one, cause main on opposite side of the road. So I don't know if they actually have a sleeve or not, so, um, but it's, uh, it was, uh, putting out a pretty good amount of water. I mean, it had a, probably a whole cup, actually two over by the side of my painting, so gotta push some water out. And the thing that was maining, cause it's been leaking for a while, but one minute we had water there, next minute there was no water. And the guy was moving right over top of it and then it got dry there and I, it just started coming up out of the ground, so it was, it was kinda weird, so, but.
Two minutes? Alright, yeah, I agree with Frankie, I'll make this real quick. I appreciate everything Perrill has done, um, their lifesaver, uh, the periphere, the mayor, I mean, the public works directly. I can go on and on and on, you know, and it's, I like that community atmosphere, but it's a shame. Our own county and I don't like talking about it, I wish, you know, Mark Marbury would come down and talk or just do something as our commissioner. I understand they're under a lot of pressure, so we are, are we? But we all have to work together as a good, the common good, whether I'm here next time or not, it doesn't matter. Somebody takes my place, I hope they do best, I hope they don't crash this, you know? But that's all I have to say, so if anybody, anybody wanna talk or? Alright, um, so you guys got a motion to close the river meeting and, and we'll go into close.
I make the motion that we adjourn this meeting and go into full session.
Alright.
I second the motion.
Alright, motion made, second on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Alright.